Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming. My name is Denise Specht. My pronouns are she/her. I'm president of Education Minnesota, Union of More Than 86,000 Minnesota Educators. I'm proud to stand here today with allies and partners. We are here to protect and expand the freedoms of educators and students to learn, teach, and feel welcome in Minnesota schools. In the next few minutes, you will hear from speakers from Jewish Community Action, Outfront Minnesota, Gender Justice, Unidos Minnesota, and a fired-up parent group, the Bloomington Mamas, which is opposing book bans in that school district. We also have many special guests with us today, including Beverly Tinni from SEIU Local 284, the Union of 10,000 School Staff across the state, Kathy O'Keefe and Jan Hurdle from 200 Strong in Hastings, Carly Sedchuck, also from the Bloomington Mamas, and Nate Stein, a Minneapolis teacher who was part of Education Minnesota's new affinity group of Jewish educators. Welcome to all of you, and if I missed anyone, my apologies. So everyone is here because we are concerned that a toxic national movement is about to sweep into Minnesota's school boards through elections in a dozen key districts, mostly in the suburbs. It's a movement to restrict what students can learn about race and racism in Minnesota, what they can read, what they can and can't read in the school library, whether they feel safe as their authentic selves, and whether they can find the support for their mental health needs in schools. And it's about whether educators can bring their full selves to the school building every day, whether they can recommend age-appropriate books without punishment, and whether they can teach about history as it was, not as some politicians wish it would have been. It's easy to dismiss this movement as a Florida thing, as an Oklahoma thing, as a Texas thing. But that would be a mistake because it is here. In the Bloomington Public Schools, there are more than 50 challenges to 30 titles in the school libraries already this year. Most of them are books with LGBTQ+ characters, which fits the national trend. In Roseville, Mass Resistance filed an open records request for all the titles in the library. And shortly after that, the book protests started. And if you're not familiar with Mass Resistance, it's a homophobic hate group from Massachusetts as defined by the Southern Poverty Law Center. We hear Mass Resistance has been consulting with Restore Minnesota, which is also working in school board races this year. Restore Minnesota believes in a fictional version of American history that's popular among certain nationalist churches, at least according to its own website. In Hastings in April, the right-wing group Minnesota Parents Alliance hosted a speaker connected with Moms for Liberty named Jennifer McWilliams. McWilliams claimed to be an expert in what educators call social emotional learning, or SEL for short. So a local school teacher, who actually is an expert in SEL, went to listen. And what she reports she heard was a QAnon-level conspiracy theory about a government plot for data-mining students and a weird prediction that global elites would use data from student surveys to persuade Americans to surrender their guns. That's wild stuff. But she also told parents to forbid their children forever seeing a counselor, a social worker, or confiding in an adult at school. As a teacher, I can only imagine the terrible consequences for younger young people struggling with their own mental health. In October, the Minnesota Child Protection League is hosting its own so-called SEL expert, James Lindsay. He's a speaker whose homophobia, racism, and conspiracy theories take up an entire page on the Southern Poverty Law Center's website. And the Child Protection League is still promoted as, quote, "a helpful resource", unquote, by the Parents Alliance. Now, that's the same Minnesota Parents Alliance that just yesterday published a tweet that dismisses as noise a newspaper report that a candidate for the Roseville School Board was a Holocaust denier. Bloomington, Hastings, and Roseville all have school board races this fall. There are more stories from more districts across the state, and you don't have to look very hard to find them. Yes, this toxic ideology in Minnesota, with its fantasy history, oppressive gender roles... I'm going to start back. Yes, this toxic ideology is in Minnesota with its fantasy history, oppressive gender roles, and hurtful conspiracies. That fact is forcing a simple question on voters this fall. Will Minnesota schools keep striving to be more welcoming? Continue evolving for BIPOC and LGBTQ+ youth? And will students continue to support students in crisis? Or not? We have our answer to that question, but I will save that for my closing remarks. Now, I will bring up our first speaker, Kendra Redmond of the Bloomington Mamas.
Good morning. I'm Kendra Redmond. My pronouns are she/her. The Bloomington Mamas Facebook group helps families connect, share resources, and build community. We arrange playdates, ask for recommendations, and share upcoming events. Unlike many Moms groups, the Bloomington Mamas group is built on kindness and inclusion. In August, a post went up on the group. People affiliated with the Minnesota Parent Alliance and Moms for Liberty would be petitioning the school board that night, asking for the immediate removal of 30 books from our public school libraries. Many about LGBTQIA+ and racially diverse characters, many written by queer authors and people of color. Bloomington Mamas grabbed their keys. Now, we're discussing school board candidates. We're talking to our neighbors, doctors, churches, coworkers, and PTAs, urging them to tell the school board to keep those books in circulation and to vote in this fall's election. We're putting up flyers when we stop for coffee. We're writing letters and speeches on voice memo apps while driving the kids to school and late into the night. In September, more than a dozen Mamas talked at the school board listening session on the value of these books and the harm of banning them. One book banner complained that we were going all Mama Bear over this. We are. We're caring for children and parents recovering from COVID, navigating mental health challenges, struggling to afford rising costs, and trying to teach our kids about racial justice, kindness, autonomy, and integrity in this environment. Now, at least until the challenge is resolved, 30 titles have been pulled from our school shelves. Books that change lives and save lives. Books that share different perspectives and teach our kids empathy, compassion, consent, and that they belong. Books that reflect who they are. We encourage everyone to go Mama Bear on this issue. Contact your local school board, spread the word, and vote in November if you have an election. Intolerance has no place in Bloomington or anywhere else in Minnesota.
Shemah Torah. Happy New Year. My name is Beth Gendler. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the executive director of Jewish Community Action. JCA organizes Minnesota Jews for racial and economic justice alongside our partners and friends, many of whom are standing up here with me today. Jews here in Minnesota and around the world just celebrated Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, and tomorrow night, we begin our Sukkot celebrations. This is the holiest and most celebratory time of year for us. And I feel really lucky to live in a community that protects and defends my right to celebrate my holidays. And I'm grateful that my queer Jewish kid goes to a welcoming and inclusive Minneapolis public school that supports her for everything she is and provides an education that reflects and honors the diversity of its student population. But as you've heard, there are white Christian nationalist groups that are promoting school board candidates across the state who would have us believe that teaching kids about diversity, ethnicity, race, gender, and accurate American history is distracting. In fact, as you heard in response to local and national news reporting that a straight-up Holocaust-denying Nazi sympathizer is on the ballot to fill a seat on the Roseville School Board, the Minnesota Parents Alliance tweeted that Minnesota voters need to tune out this noise. Is it noise that antisemitic incidents increased by 36% last year, marking the highest number on record since tracking began in 1979? Is it just noise that local synagogues and Jewish organizations like mine get targeted by hateful emails, phone calls, and flyers regularly? What about the noisy notion that an American Jewish cabal was behind migration on the southern border? This manufactured story is what inspired a shooter to murder worshippers in a Pittsburgh synagogue in 2018. The noise is deadly, and white Christian nationalists want us to ignore it. We know that hate is on the rise, and we know that antisemitism can't be separated from anti-LGBTQ+, anti-black, anti-Muslim, anti-Asian, or any kind of hate that targets historically marginalized Minnesotans. We are portrayed as threats to society by merely existing or daring to ask that our stories be included when students are taught about history. We are not noise. We are not a distraction. We are Minnesotans, and we want Minnesota voters to be aware of what's actually on the ballot in school board races across our state this year.
Thank you, Beth. My name is Kat Roan. I'm the executive director for Outfront Minnesota, our state's largest LGBTQ advocacy organization. All students deserve school environments where they are safe and welcome, where they are seen, supported, and able to be their full and authentic selves. Unfortunately, both here in Minnesota and across the country, LGBTQ students are facing a climate that is increasingly hostile. As our partners at the Trevor Project noted this year, 86% of transgender and non-binary youth nationwide say recent debates around anti-trans bills have negatively impacted their mental health. The majority of LGBTQ students in this country have experienced bullying in their schools. And here in Minnesota, the Minnesota Student Survey data shows that 1 in 10 LGBTQ youth experience weekly or daily bullying based on their perceived sexual orientation or gender identity. Our organization hears from students all across the state, from the metro to the suburbs to greater Minnesota, who are experiencing harm. This is having a real effect on their health and well-being and on their ability to be fully engaged as students. And we applaud the many educators, staff, and school boards that have taken steps to conduct training, advance proactive policies, and demonstrate their commitment to welcome and inclusion. But we are concerned with the growing number of districts that are challenging best practices and contributing to this hostile climate. This year, we have seen school boards consider withdrawing all of their athletic programs from participation in the Minnesota State High School League simply because it includes trans kids. We had board members propose stripping same-sex benefits from district employees. We have seen attempts to limit ill-defined political expression, including pride flags, pins, or clothing within school environments. And like places all across the country, we have seen a proliferation of attempts to ban books in schools and public libraries with almost an exclusive focus on BIPOC and LGBTQ narratives. We are concerned that some of the school board candidates running in this year's election cycle are actively advancing harmful narratives about LGBTQ lives, seeking to stop critical investments and efforts to support diverse families and students, and pursuing policies that may put them at odds with legal obligations under both state and federal law. These are reckless and harmful choices that will have real consequences for communities across this state. Our schools and our communities deserve better. LGBTQ students are in every community and every district across the state. They belong in every community and district across this state. And I hope that people across Minnesota get engaged in these critical elections and the conversations to come to ensure that schools are a place where all students feel like they belong. Local elections have always mattered, but school board races have never been more critical than they are today. We are proud to stand alongside a diverse group of partners who are committed to supporting students and educators within this state. When we invest in our schools, we invest in the future of Minnesota's communities.
Good morning. My name is Kristy Hall, and I'm a senior staff attorney at Gender Justice, a legal and policy advocacy organization dedicated to advancing gender equity through the law. Gender Justice has a long history of fighting to protect the rights, dignity, and humanity of transgender students at school. We know that in Minnesota, inclusion is not only the law, it's the right thing to do. In 2018, we sued the Anoka Hannipin School District for discrimination against our client, a transgender student. He was participating on the boys' swimming team and using the boys' locker room without any incident at all until the school board got involved. He was singled out and forced to use segregated changing facilities that no other student was required to use. In September 2020, the Minnesota Court of Appeals said that violates Minnesota law. It violates the Minnesota Human Rights Act and the Minnesota Constitution for school districts to single out and segregate transgender students from their peers. We also represented a transgender middle school student in a case against the Buffalo Hanover Montrose School District for Discrimination. The school repeatedly isolated him from his classmates, limiting his restroom access to a single facility that no other student was required to use. And here's what he said about that experience. He said, "What I really want people to understand is that I'm a person, a kid, a kid who should not have had to go through that. Nobody should be excluded and discarded like I was." Our lawsuit against that school district concluded in 2019 with protections for transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming students within the district. So what I really want to emphasize is that we've proven time and time again that in Minnesota, the law and the Constitution protects equality and inclusion for all students, including transgender students. We've also seen what happens when school boards, driven by a minority-supported political agenda, seek to undermine these protections and single out transgender students. Students and the school community suffer, and those schools spend precious time, energy, and resources on lawsuits that should never have been filed in the first place. Across the country, we've seen hundreds of policies that have sought to rewrite history, target LGBTQ+ students and families, ban social-emotional learning, and more. This fall, it's vital that voters educate themselves on the candidates in their community running for school board. It's important to support inclusion. It's important to respect Minnesota law. Who doesn't? So together, we can ensure that our schools are places where all students can thrive, no matter who they are, where trans students don't have to live in fear that they will be targeted by their school board, and where students of color can see themselves reflected in the curriculum. Thank you.
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name's Isabella Cook. I'm a youth organizer who worked on the 2023 Ethnic Studies Campaign. And I'm a strong believer in the impacts of an education that is centered on inclusivity and the freedom to learn in honest United States history and curriculum. As a youth organizer, I was able to connect with a wide variety of MN students from as young as 7th grade to the college level. The reality is that when students are given books and lessons that reflect their own identities, it sparks a deeper engagement between that child and their learning. Courses like Ethnic Studies allows children to better understand themselves, the communities around them, and gives them the tools to navigate our very complicated world. Like many other people my age, I've been watching how different groups and politicians are working to deny the next generation of students access to the lessons of Ethnic Studies, even books, because they conflict with certain politicians' own ideas of what history should be. As I hear the voices of organizations like those in Texas, Iowa, Florida, trying to take over MN school boards this fall, I worry that these things could happen here. This would be a great tragedy for students like me. I can tell you from my own experience growing up in this system and through the voices of students I've engaged with, that representation in the classroom, in our lessons, in our literature, through our teachers, is critical for our kids. When I was given a book that featured my own story and identity as a Caribbean-American, I experienced a lightbulb moment of understanding that changed my life. I realized that all I wanted and what so many other kids need is to feel seen in their education and supported. This is exactly what Ethnic Studies does. It allows all students, no matter who they are, to feel embraced by their education. Acceptance goes a long way for our kids. Our school should be a safe space for all of us, one that fosters and teaches belonging, growth, responsibility, community. It should not be a place where politicians deny students like me the lessons we need because they want to recreate schools that never worked for us. We should celebrate our changing education, embrace our freedom to expand our learning. And please vote this November for the candidates that reflect the values of our Minnesota youth and students. Thank you.
Thank you. The stakes have never been higher for our students, their families, and Minnesota educators. The opposition to our values and vision for inclusive, effective schools has never been better funded and more organized. With the help of national organizations, the opposition has been recruiting and training candidates for over a year. And there's a separate campaign running this fall that will affect these local elections. The Freedom Club, a group of the state's wealthiest people, has partnered with American Majority Action to increase the turnout of anti-equity voters in these traditionally low-key local elections. The website is mnvotesearly.org. Again, mnvotesearly.org, if you want to look it up. As this campaign's organizers have said, the goal isn't to persuade moderate voters. It's to inflame the base, encourage more absentee voting, win local seats this year, and take back the Minnesota House in 2024. In rhetoric and tactics, the November 23 local elections are a dress rehearsal for the November 2024 state elections. So pay attention. Honestly, right now, most educators would prefer to focus on the students in front of them and the exploding costs of their health insurance than worry about politics. But for all of us here today, apathy is not an option. To do nothing is to break the trust of the people who depend on us. No, we will fight for the freedom of educators to teach truthfully, respectfully, safely, and as ourselves. And we will defend these three freedoms for our students. The freedom to read age-appropriate books that affirm and educate so kids can become lifelong readers. The freedom to feel safe and welcome in their school as their authentic selves. And the freedom to learn an honest history of the world, both the good and the bad, so that we will not repeat the terrible mistakes of our nation's past. So all we're asking, all we're asking Minnesotans to do is to get informed about their local races, find candidates that share their values, and vote, vote, vote. Now, we have time for a few questions, if there are any. That I'm not aware of. And maybe some of the organizations who are here can answer that. Is anyone...
Yes. Outfront Action is endorsing candidates in school board elections.
Is that on your website?
Yeah.
Is that just individual candidates? Do people look at their local districts or on the Outfront?
On the Outfront, yes.
Anyone else? I am aware that they are working with candidates where we see school board elections right now. So I believe they're doing some direct candidate training. And again, maybe some of the other organizations might have some more information.
Sure. Yeah. We have had active conversations with the folks at the School Board Integrity Project. I think, you know, there's a broad commitment across a lot of different groups who are represented here and elsewhere to try and get good information to candidates about how to run campaigns, how to talk about these issues, how to engage with local communities. And we're certainly in conversation with them to help support candidates who share our values.
So there's about a month until the election, just over a month. What's that next one look like for this coalition?
Well, speaking for Education Minnesota, we're going to continue to talk with the public about the importance of voting and, you know, being informed voters. Education Minnesota's website with school board information is edmnvotes.org, E-D-M-N-votes.org. So we will continue to do that as well. And obviously, continue working with our partners and allies to make sure that we ensure that our schools continue to be the ones where all of our students are going to feel safe and have the freedom to learn. Anybody else?
Yeah, we're actively out there. SEIU Local 284 are doing the same thing. I've been doing that with...
I think what you're going to find is, and what we're hearing is, the stakes have never been higher. You know, these school board races are happening in places where perhaps, you know, there haven't been contested elections. Or maybe it's been, you know, the local banker who has an interest in strong schools, or maybe it's a student's grandparent who wants to give back to the schools that have given so much to their family. But what we are finding is that there are more and more contested races. These candidates aren't coming from, you know, a lot of times, they're being funded from a national agenda and getting national money. In fact, we are very aware that I think in last year in Brainerd, there were about, I think there was about $40,000 spent in a race that typically would not have had anybody outside of the state mailers coming from southwestern Minnesota. With an interest in what is going on in Brainerd, Minnesota, you have to ask yourself, why? With an interest in what is going on in Brainerd, Minnesota, you have to ask yourself why. Well, I'll speak from an educator's standpoint, and we do have an educator here, and we've got many parents, obviously, you heard that earlier. But, you know, school boards set policy. They approve curriculum. They hire and fire staff. So they are making decisions that affect the day-to-day work of educators. And knowing that and hearing from some of the candidates and what they stand for, we've got educators who are feeling a lot of stress and a lot of anxiety right now. I think also the fact that we are seeing this lack of trust of educators and school staff to do the work that they were trained to do. These are professionals who know curriculum. They know what our age-appropriate lesson plans and books look like. And they are being told what to do by people who do not have that experience. It's just, it's very, it's a slap on their profession. And maybe Nate, do you want to add to that?
School boards, I mean, they set policies, they hire and fire staff. They appoint superintendents, they set tone for everything that happens in the district. My aunt was a specialized teacher before I was, and she was forced into early retirement where she, any little thing she did was a meeting and a mark on her record, trying to get her out so they could get cheaper, younger teachers into their district so that they could spend money elsewhere. As a teacher, I don't want to be constantly looking over my shoulder at every little thing I do, wondering if I'm going to be forced out like she was. I don't want to be looking over my shoulder. I want to be there for my students. I want to be there for the families and supporting my community and making sure that it's a safe place for my students. But if we have a school board that doesn't support us, it's a much harder job to do. Yeah, I'm Nate Stein, S-T-E-I-N. Teacher at Seward in Minneapolis.
Yeah, I think I would just highlight the importance of local elections just broadly. School boards are one piece of that, but certainly local city council elections, all sorts of county seats, and all of those things affect our lives deeply. We often think about policy as just being a state-level or a national-level thing, especially, you know, right now as we're all in the midst of government shutdown discussions. But local policy often has the most profound impacts on our daily lives. And because so many of these issues happen in our schools, we see these as especially critical races. And those of us who have been engaged in this work for a long time know how important it is to have school board members who understand deeply the value of education and are there to support welcoming and inclusive environments.
Just a quick piece. School board races and elections, those people, the decisions they make, they directly impact the students. And one thing that always bothers me is when these people come into these spaces, some of the things that they're fighting for are dramatically disconnected from what the students actually want and what they're experiencing. So we really want to make sure that we have people in these elections who actually are reflecting what these students need. That's another big piece.
Yeah, I just wanted to give one example, not to take away from that, but on the policy side. For example, the school board decides policies, like what happens when parents have concerns about a book that's in the school library. And in Bloomington, those books are pulled from the shelf immediately until small groups are formed to review the book within each school, and that concern is addressed. So they directly, at least in Bloomington, can impact what happens when people challenge books in the library.
We're hearing anecdotes all over the state about school policies, about flags, about signs. We just heard a story about an educator who was told that they had to take down all of their signs that said, "All are welcome here." And when we hear those policies, you know, as an educator and as a community, we should be asking ourselves, if that sign can't be up, then who isn't welcome here? And those are real questions that we should be asking, and those are the types of policies that we're seeing right now. I think we're out of time. I think we only have this room checked out for, I think we're overdue. So maybe we're over our time. So all of the speakers will be sticking around. We'll probably be gathering out. So if there are any other questions that you have, feel free to stay. Thank you all for being here.